Is 6:50. Public hearing regarding the proposed repeal of the massage therapy establishment's ordinance. Roll call. Sheila, please.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Despard.
Here.
Councilor Finger.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nelson.
Here.
Councilor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
And Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Eleven members are present and none are absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current on Friday, March 24, 2023, Town of Enfield Legal Notice. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, April 3, 2023, at 6:50 p.m. to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed repeal of the massage therapy establishment's ordinance, Town Code Sections 18-31 through 18-37 inclusive, 18-61 through 18-68 inclusive, and 18-91 through 18-94 inclusive. Dated this 21st day of March 20 of 23, Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. The ground rules for the public hearing, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take too much time so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals a desire or second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who share a third, fourth, etc., and they please refrain from personalities. So, a public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to approach the council?
Thank you.
Good evening. Right there.
Right here, fine.
Yep. State your name and address.
Hi, folks. My name is Nathan Faye, and I'm born and raised in Enfield, Connecticut here. And I've established my business, Hazardville Wellness, located on 308 Hazard Avenue in 2015. I've been a licensed.
I'm sorry, the street address.
Nate, is your mic on?
As a resident, yeah. My residence is Summers, Connecticut, 19 Lindell Drive in Summers, Connecticut.
Your business address.
And my business address is 308 Hazard Avenue in Enfield, Connecticut. I've been a licensed massage therapist since 2006. I'm a board-certified massage therapist as of 2014, and in 2022, I completed a formal degree in osteopathy. Prior to establishing my business, I worked within chiropractic centers up until 2015 before establishing Hazardville Wellness. In the last 17 years or so, I've seen the growth of massage therapy as a whole. We've raised the bar of education. We've raised the bar on board certification, as well as continuing education and hours required to become a licensed massage therapist in the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut established licensing laws in 1993. And I've received, in my own clinic personally, I've received referrals from orthopedic physicians, neurologists, and physical therapists as a means for clients to avoid the use of drugs in surgery, as well as surgery for musculoskeletal disorders. Unfortunately, towns like ours still hold archaic laws. I believe this law was established in 1967. And after years of, you know, myself paying taxes within the town, giving to charities, I can safely say that running a small business, while it's both rewarding, can be extremely exhausting as well. So, I'm asked, I was asked in the last year, after being established in Enfield for the past 17 years, to apply for what was called a massage parlor permit. I can assure you that Hazardville Wellness and my industry is not a massage parlor. This is dark times, and it's time to get these sort of dark, archaic laws off the book because, at the end of the day, it's a step backwards for myself, it's a step backwards for my colleagues, and I think it's a step backwards for the town of Enfield as well to hold these laws for myself and my colleagues. I can, man, I never get nervous. I teach seminars internationally, and I'm like, it's like crazy. I'm never nervous. So, it's town for the time to drop this law. I can assure you that the state of Connecticut, with our licensing laws, our education, our certifications in continuing education, assure that therapists like mine are in good standing. You know, our education and our boards, we've come a long way since then. I'm asking the town as a whole to drop the law. I'm asking the town to do what I've been told from a lot of you in the past, which is this is supposed to be a small business-friendly town. So, you know, being small business also means keeping, you know, the town's hands out of my pockets when it doesn't need to, okay? So, I thank you guys for listening to me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in regard to the massage therapy? Okay. I declare this public hearing over. All right. Good evening. Public hearing ground rules. Sheila, roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Despard.
Here.
Councilor Finger.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Council Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nelson.
Here.
Councilor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
And Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Eleven members are present and none are absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current on Friday, March 24, 2023, Town of Enfield Legal Notice. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, April 3, 2023, at 6:55 p.m. to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the amendment to the Enfield Town Code Section 82-41 Parking Violation Fines. Dated this 21st day of March, 2023, Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. The announcing of the ground rules for the public hearing, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so that everyone has the opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire a third, fourth, etc. time. Please refrain from personalities. Is there anybody who would like to approach the council regarding the parking violation Nobody wants to come up? Okay. Public hearing is declared over. And welcome to tonight's Enfield Town Council regular meeting. Tonight is Monday, April 3, 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. The meeting can also be seen on YouTube Live. Prayer.
Lord, may your glory and the promise of this joyous Easter season bring peace and love to everyone here and to those we hold most dear. Bless our homes and community with hope as we rejoice in your victory over death and the grave. May each day of this Easter week remind us of your promises and be renewed with newness of life as we wait for spring's warmer days. Let us also remember all the victims who were killed at the Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee, last week. Comfort all the families, staff, and children with strength for the coming days. Lord, shine your light in the darkness. Help us be vessels of your goodness. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Sheila, roll call, please.
Councilor Ungary.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councilor Despard.
Here.
Councilor Finger.
Here.
Councilor Hopkins.
Here.
Council Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Nelson.
Here.
Councilor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
Eleven members are present and none are absent.
The fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire, there are exits in the back of the room and to my left, audience is right. Please exit through the doors and go downstairs into the parking lot. Item five. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting on March 20, 23? So, okay, Councilor Mangini and a second.
Second.
Councilor Pisner. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous?
(laughing).
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on March 20, 23? Councilor Mangini and a second by Councilor Ungary. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Eleven in favor. Thank you. There are no special guests. Next, we have public communications. And once again, I state this at all of our meetings, before we open, public communications. I just want to remind everyone that you're going to have five minutes to address the council. Please refrain from any personal attacks or personnel matters. We will not respond to public comment, but as a reminder to everyone, this is not a forum to air grievances and discuss town employees. So, when you come on up, just state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to come forward?
Good evening. Good evening. Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. Comments were made in the past month that the Enfield Street residents are a political force and against affordable housing. This is the reason the Felician Sisters Incorporated of North America, FSI, proposed project was defeated. These comments are completely false. The Enfield Street neighborhood was never against FSI in seeking an additional source of revenue for the preservation of their property by way of modifications to existing structures. What was at issue were changes to current PZC rules and regulations. We were in favor of a project that would not require changes to the existing R-33 zone, would comply with Enfield's historic district regulations as to the historical look and feel of the neighborhood, traffic, character, sightlines, density, etc. To say Enfield Street is a political force is quite a compliment, only if it was true. If we were so powerful, I want to repeat these words again. If we were so powerful, as suggested, then the zone line would never have been moved from making true abutters to non-abutters and given I-91 more rights than the taxpayers. It is issues like this that fire up ordinary residents to collaborate with each other in seeking equality. After the FSI proposal was denied by the PZC, the Enfield Street neighborhood reached out to the Felician Sisters through a third party to have a meeting to open a goodwill dialogue. To date, there has been no reply. Oddly enough, it has come to the light the Felician Sisters did meet with the town manager on Monday, March 27. Facebook appointment logged from the town managers. We, the neighborhood, are still hopeful of a meeting with FSI. Respectfully submitted, Nikki Price. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Walter J. Cruzell, 21 Charley Road. I have a lot of things I could say, but I'm going to make it simple. Happy Easter, everybody. The town, have a nice Good Friday because we don't celebrate that in the school anymore. So, have a nice Good Friday and happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? Second time? Okay. Public communications are... Okay. Next, counselor communications. I just have a few things that I would like to just start off with. Monthly, I do a newspaper article, but this past month, I started talking about this April and some events that were coming forward. So, I just want to just go through in regard to spring cleaning, Spring Cleanup Day here in Enfield, especially with Earth Day coming up. So, on Saturday, April 22, in conjunction with the Town's Beautification Committee, we're going to sponsor a town clean sweep community event where groups and individuals can come up and clean areas of your town and even in your own neighborhood. The event kicks off at 9:00, and there will be garbage bags, t-shirts provided, and I think last year, there also gloves were provided for people. So, really looking forward to that. In addition to the clean sweep, the towns partnered with 360 Federal Credit Union to do a shred event, and then also Eversource gives away their little saplings like they do every year. And Hartspringe now is going to be coming in for clothing and textile collection. And then the last thing is the Drug Takeback Day will also be held from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, it's something that really will involve the whole community. And the other thing that we're also kicking off is the Clean Sweep event at Brainerd Park, and that's going to start at 1:00 in the actual parking lot. Once again, and this is, you know, a reminder to all of the residents in regard to the transfer station, residents may obtain a permit for $10 with proof of residency, and if you're using a vehicle registered to someone else, then you can apply, I believe, for a temporary for $10.
For one day.
For a one-day pass. Okay? So, I just wanted to, you know, put that out to everybody. And once again, there's no fees are charged for leaves and grass clippings, scrap metal, flattened cardboard, TVs, microwaves, and certain electronics. And I think, well, I know, it's five free visits for brush. Okay? So, I just wanted to, and then check all that out in the public work section. But, you know, this month coming up, Earth Day, great opportunity for a community event. Come on out and support and help clean up the town for our spring cleaning. So, there. Counselor Pisner.
I just want to remind people that, and Ellen left this in our packet, and that I was going to say something about it. Thursday, April 13, at the Senior Center, they are going to have information on the senior tax program and also housing rehabilitation loan program, and this is opened up to the public. It'll be 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 13, and 6:30 for the senior tax. But, mayor to our town manager, the volunteer tax program, while I was at the home show this weekend, I chatted with a few of our older folk that do volunteer. They went on this website, and they can't see the form to fill out. Is that live on the website yet?
Would you like to answer now or wait until my report?
You can answer quickly.
So, part of my report was going to be that we are working on the brochure that will have a form as well as information. The new program, the senior volunteer tax program, is a little different in that we don't have income limits, everyone can apply, and it is really the responsibility of the volunteer who's volunteering to start tracking their hours because, come December, they will have to work with their nonprofit to get a letter certifying those hours, which is not going to be hard. People know when people are volunteering. At that point, they, all they have to do is present that letter. That letter, when certified by Mary Keller, who's at the Senior Center, who will in essence say, yes, I'm aware that loaves and fishes exists, yes, opera house exists, yes, this person serves on, you know, ex-commission for the town of Enfield. That information gets forwarded to the assessor's office, and the credit gets applied. So, I think people are just confused because we haven't done it before. This should help when we get this out.
Well, I think they were looking for a form to fill out and to get it in because they're anxious.
But this period runs from January 1. Their volunteer hours run until December 31. Their tax credit will be applied on July 1, 2024 tax bill. So, there's no rush. They have all year to get their credits and then to submit it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Mangini and Counselor Nelson.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention the Girl Scouts celebrated their 111th year anniversary recently, and Mayor Crisati and I both had the privilege of attending. He, representing the town, me, the Girl Scout child, and it was great, great to see all the young ladies that are aspiring to be leaders of our communities. And I also wanted to applaud the North Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce for the home show. Many of us were there at different times to visit, and it was really, I think, an eye-opener for me to see all of the businesses that did show up and did register. I was really pleased with that. And lastly, the DEI Liaisons and Committee, Councilman Marie and I, and John actually, went to a kite invitation-only session the other night, and it had to do with diversity and inclusion, and it was a very short session, but I thought it was very well-attended and very worthwhile. And we got to meet different people from different religions. I'm sorry. My buddy over here, Matt, was there as well. We were all at different tables.
People confuse us all the time.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I just found it to be very stimulating and very interesting to see the different people from different walks of life. So, I just wanted to share, you know, the fact that Enfield is moving forward very nicely in that direction to accept all people, and it was good. Thank you.
Counselor Nelson.
Okay. First, through the mayor to the town manager, again, I had asked you the other day about those large square boxes that are getting painted on the roads with the call "Before You Dig." Now, it's Anne Street, Pryor Road, and Middlesex Drive have them, and they're about like every 60 to 80 feet, both sides of the road, the whole length of the road. So, somebody's doing something pretty big over there, and my constituents are asking, and I don't have answers for them. Next is through the mayor to the town manager, under Town Manager Comments. Could you please give us a pretty detailed explanation of what the holdup is for the open space statute that this council has to create to avoid all these appeals next year for farmers and stuff like that? Because if we had an open space statute in place, we could have avoided them. I sat in a meeting last week between the BAA and the town assessor, and I think they're both saying the same thing. And if the town had a statute in place, the town assessor would totally agree with the BAA, and the BAA saying, well, that's how it's been done for 30 years, and the assessor saying, well, that didn't hold up in court. So, they're both right, and all we got to do is pass this statute, and it eliminates it. And it was nice to see both of them sitting down, having a conversation with each other, and I think if they could do that and work through the 44 appeals that are on the table, I think they could resolve quite a few of them. Now, on to the next one, and this is not a good one. "In the light of recent events that have come down, I am requesting this council waive the confidentiality of the investigation. You guys won't support the reappointment of Donna Dubinowski, but when a sitting liaison for the investigation sends a member of the public a text message, several of them, giving them his details about the investigation and how who's responsible and how certain members of this council don't care and aren't taking it serious, and that if he had his way, certain things would be done to a particular way." This is a liaison to the investigation. Now, when I ask my liaison, he won't even comment on these text messages because he's sticking to his oath of office that he took, and I respect that. I don't like it, but I respect it. And when a resident is telling me more information about what's going on with this investigation than I'm getting as a council member sitting up here, there's a serious problem. And as an attorney, he took a code of ethics, and he knows what confidentiality is, and he should resign as a council member because what's the point of executive session or confidentiality when you have a member sending text messages to a particular person who has an appeal pending? He could blow the entire investigation that I just found out is going to be extended for another two to three weeks. This isn't right, it isn't ethical, and it's got to stop. This council has more leaks than the Titanic did. And I'm being asked to be patient and wait for the investigation, and we all are getting screened at by our constituents as we wait for it. Councilman Santinella has given us as detailed updates as he can without breaching the confidentiality. Councilman Ludwig, he is stuck to his oath that he gave you guys, and they're not sharing anything. And when a resident says so-and-so said this, and I'm like, no way, and you get text messages, how stupid could you be to send text messages in this day and age? It's wrong, and I really think he should resign for this. And if he's not willing to resign through the mayor to the town attorney, I want to know what the grounds are for a council member to be removed for unethical behavior sitting up here through the town manager because you don't have your report anymore. I remember you said that. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Counselor Finger.
Kind of hard to pull up on that one. Another thing about the town is, even though we did yard waste collection this last Friday, next Friday, we're not having collection because of Good Friday. So, don't put your barrels out, and the transfer stations close, bring them Saturday. And one of the things I'd like to do is make a motion that if we're sitting here at 9:00 to anything left on the agenda, we should table it to the next meeting so we go home and watch UConn play. So...
We're going to get it done.
I'll make sure that we're done.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say that I believe it's patently wrong to politicize something like the investigation of the tax assessor and the Board of Assessment Appeals. This is something that reaches across the town. It affects just about every level of things, and it is wrong to play politics with it. That is only going to incite the issue more. This investigation needs to do its work, but I think it's also totally fair for constituents who are affected to reach out to their counselors and get general updates on things. Just to lay it out there, that's what occurred here, but I think it's wrong that Counsel Nelson is trying to politicize this. The results of the investigation will come in due time. I can say, without breaching any kind of confidentiality, that this has been handled objectively and fairly, and I think Counselor Santinella will provide a general update as to the status of the investigation. Thank you.
Okay.
I guess he wants me to read the text messages then.
No. But we're, I know, we're done with that, okay, for tonight? We're done. Counselor Santinella.
I disagree, Bob. I have to say, I am completely outraged at what has transpired and the comments that have been made to constituents that I am aware of, that are absolutely nonproductive to the investigation that we have spent so much time working on, taxpayer dollars working on. Counselor Ludwig and Counselor Hopkins and I have been nothing but respectful of the dignity of the process and the confidentiality of it, and to have it, have speculation put out there for people to share that is... out there for people to share that is completely and utterly false is patently irresponsible, irresponsible, and I'm offended. I am not going to spend my time working on stuff to have somebody just, you know, piss it to the wind. It's ridiculous. I don't care what side of the aisle you sit on. We do not know what is in this report. We have not seen a draft. We have not seen, we have not discussed specifics of any appeals with two exceptions, but to go out and tell people that there are, there is evidence to address a personnel matter? Unacceptable. Don't waste my time and don't insult me because you're trying to get a vote. I'm offended. Nick, you shouldn't have done that.
Thank you, Counselor Santinella. Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to be very clear that constituents reaching out about ongoing issues in town, I think all counselors have an obligation to discuss with them. I apologize if I've shared anything that has created enough for folks to politicize this in a way that it shouldn't be. I think that is ultimately the goal of this, to get a result that is objective and fair and understandable and is public. And I know that each member of the, the team here, the liaisons, want to see that happen. Thank you.
I'm just, I'm going to make one final comment in regard to this. This is something that I was not looking for this weekend, something that came upon me, and I addressed it. I addressed it with Mr. Hop, Counselor Hopkins. I'm not happy about it. I'm not happy about some of the comments that I, that I, that I read in some of the messages, and this is an investigation, this is a review, this is things that are in confidence, opinions, or saying that there's information there to do something in regards to personnel issues, once again, I will state is obviously wrong, just like I stated before. So that's it in terms of that. We're going to, we're going to move forward with our agenda right now.
No, 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 Bob. He called me out as politics, and he said, there's nothing there. He's playing politics. Councilman Santinella said it. I have a right to defend my actions, so let's, let's see if this is politics or not. I'm not going to read the parts that don't need to be read because that would be playing dirty pool, which he did against you guys, not me. But it's mind-bogglingly stupid. I'm sorry you are going through this. I hope I have a resolution soon. The investigation report should be done this month. I think there will be enough in there to fire a particular person, even with this new round of stuff. And I can go on and on and on, and only a liaison to this committee is privileged to that information. So you tell me, how is that standard dialogue with a, with a resident of Enfield when 10, well, seven members, or maybe even 10, don't have that information, and I don't think you do either, Nick? So you want to talk who's playing politics to try to get people's vote? You won't re-support Donna Dubinowski, which means you don't support the BAA. You consider a certain person should be terminated for the information you've heard? Well, that's playing both sides of the fence, and anybody who re-elects you because you don't answer questions, they have a problem. They should reconsider voting at the voting polls because you don't answer questions, and you tell people what they want to hear, and you don't, you just, your politics 101.
All right. Okay.
Sorry.
This is, this is enough. We're.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I do.
We're, we're, Nick, we're ending the conversation. We're moving onward, we're going to be moving onward to Town Manager Report, Item 9.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant Town Manager Belinda to start his report because I'm almost done with the open space answer. I just need another minute.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to update the general public, I did this to you guys in executive session, that your recent adoption of changing the salaries of two key positions has brought fruition upon the town government, specifically the Assistant Rec Manager position. We could not find anyone really to take the job at the rate we were offering. I came back to you guys and I pleaded, basically, can we adjust it to the current market rates? You granted it, you adopted it. We have now hired someone that's very experienced that will be working for the town of Enfield April 17th. We're very excited. The second position was the Assistant Assessor position. Again, I pleaded with you that we are not producing people with minimal qualifications, but you guys adopted that new wage structure. I went out to the market. We are now interviewing four people this Thursday, so would meet the minimum qualifications. So thank you for listening. You're helping us fill positions that are needed so we can keep this town running, as you guys deserve it. And the last is Go UConn. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Town Manager?
Yes. Just a couple of quick things. We are deep into the budget process right now and very happy with a lot of the insight that is being provided by our department heads. We've been having very strategic discussions that's resulting in a more efficient appropriation of resources, better use of our personnel, and some really good strategic partnerships across departments so that we're working closer together. So we're going to be hopefully presenting you a really great package in mid-April for you to start to look at and make recommendations back to us. We've also had some really great conversations, and for those of you who saw our Facebook post, I think it was last Friday, about the summer concerts in the band shell, that post had a higher reach and response and feedback than any post that we've done since I've been here. The response from the Enfield community about the summer concerts being staged back here under the new band shell was, the trajectory was, was crazy. So we stepped up our efforts last week and started putting together what we think is going to be a package. We had originally conservatively talked about doing like a third Thursday of every month, which would have resulted in three concerts, June, July, and August. But based on the feedback and based on working with some people who are very familiar in this area, we think that we can do an every Tuesday night concert, starting in June, going to the end of August, based on the partnership we have with the Enfield Cultural and Arts Commission, which have some money put aside to do that, knowing that the band shell was coming, with some of the community dollars that are still in the town manager's budget that we have not expended, that I've frozen for this purpose, and obviously looking ahead to the July and August concerts, which would be funded in the new budget. So what I'd just like to run by everybody is three concerts in June, June 13th, June 20th, and June 27th on Tuesdays. And on Tuesdays, it's important because that's a practice timeframe for these bands, so if you actually have a rain situation on a Tuesday, oftentimes you can get them to come on a Wednesday, so we would be able to have a rain date. In July, we would be avoiding the timeframe of the Fourth of July Festival as well as the actual holiday, so there would be three concerts. One of them, what we would like to do is either have one of the military bands come in, which is a free concert performance, or host something with all of the youth groups in town, because there are actually a lot of young people in Enfield that have bands or garage bands or things like that. So that would be something that we would slot into July. And then in August, we would be able to hook a concert onto National Night Out, which is August 1st, and then have three more on the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd. And we would like to start with Johnny Sixgun and end with Trailer Trash, and really have a great summer in Thompsonville at the band shell, which hopefully, supply chain-wise, arrives in May. So really, I'm just looking for feedback and guidance from the council, if this is something that you think would be a worthy investment. We also have some dollars that are being made available this spring from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, which I'm going to apply for, for a portion of these concert costs, and I also think that there's other business sponsorships that can help defray the costs. So this schedule tentatively, as well as the sound and light package that we would have to buy from a third party because we're not wired up there yet, we'll be going to the Culture and Arts Commission for review. We'll also be working with John Wilcox to kind of put that money together. I do not think it would be an impact to the taxpayers. I think we can package this with all of our existing line items in order to do this for this first season, and then next year, we would have, obviously, nine to 10 months to plan for an even bigger and better one for 2024.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then lastly, the question for Counselor Nelson in terms of what we're doing with the open space ordinance. On September 19th of last year, we had Item J on our agenda, which was to refer the matter of the open space ordinance as requested from the Conservation Commission. I believe that members came here before that meeting or at that meeting. We voted, we, the town council, referred that matter positively, nine affirmative votes, zero negative votes, one abstention, which was Counselor Nelson. We forwarded that to the Planning and Zoning Commission in September. If you go to the guide on PA 490 that is published by the Farm Bureau, on page 23, there's an entire section that talks about municipal open space designation, which is what we used as our guideline. Many of you were present over the course of the last year when we had that large meeting with farmers at the annex. Joan Nichols from the Farm Bureau was one of the speakers there, and she provided an overview of the role of the farmer, how they should handle their documentation, what the responsibilities of the assessor was and the role that they played. All of you have been very immersed in this over the last year, so you know that there is strong statutory authority for the role of the assessor granted by the state of Connecticut. Likewise, if we wanted to do a municipal open space designation, you, the legislative body, had to adopt it and forward it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is what you did. But I just want to read one section that I think will answer Counselor Nelson's question, and I can provide you copies of this PA 490 guide. We keep it in our office. It's a very useful book in terms of the complexity of 490s in general, open space, forest, farm units, et cetera. But Section 12-107E of the Connecticut General Statute states specifically that the planning commission of any municipality and preparing a plan of conservation and development for such municipality may designate upon such plan areas which it recommends for preservation as areas of open space land, provided such designation is approved by a majority vote of the legislative body of such municipality. Land included in any area so designated upon such plan as finally adopted may be classified as open spaceland for purposes of property taxation or payments in lieu thereof if there has been no change in the use of such area which has adversely affected its essential character as an, as an area of open spaceland between the date of the adoption of such plan and the date of such classification. So we followed the regulations set out in this, we sent it to Planning and Zoning Commission at that point. They were in the process of finalizing the plan of conservation and development, and that has now, as of last Thursday, been adopted and set to go into effect on May 30th. So we can look at what they adopted, and we can call that out, and we can start to promote the municipal open space designation. There's other pieces in here about how people can go about filing, and we can make that available to the public as well. Under Public Act 490, Section 12-107B, subsection 3, there is an entire definition list that people have to understand and then decide whether they fit under that. So I think so far, we're in the right direction. I will, Counselor Nelson, get a answer from the town planner as well as the chairman. We can have a conversation about when they plan to take this up and whether there is anything that needs to be done on their end to codify it and what the current plan of conservation and development looks like in terms of this designation.
Thank you. Counselor Ludwig?
Thank you for the explanation. Just curious, you said, so again, not being a lawyer, but "may" was used twice on there based on what you just read in that statute. We don't, using the word "may" is not "shall." It's great to get the recommendation, but I don't think we have to wait for it. And I think that's really, I don't want to speak for Counselor Nelson, but I think as we sort of got some more information from the Farm Bureau, it's, we, again, we have no problem sending it to the P&amp;Z and letting them review it. I don't think we have to wait for it based on that language.
Well.
And I know we would want to, so, but I mean, I think we have to, at some point, say, okay, review it and everything, but I think we need to move, I mean, I'm willing to wait till, to hear what you just said, but if it's not ready at the end of the month, then I think we have every right as a council, based on, again, the legislative body making a statute slash resolution ordinance, which is our purview, I don't think we have to. And that's my only question to what Counselor Nelson brought up. He's right. We should send it to them. I have no problem with we did, but now I think as we, this drags on a little bit, we don't have to wait based on what you just read, in my opinion.
No, I think, I think we all agree. And I may not have said it as succinctly as I should have. Because the plan of conservation and development is now adopted for the next 10 years, goes into effect May 30th, it should come back to you.
Right.
For adoption. I don't know whether that's an automatic that they're going to do it, or whether we have to ask them to do it, or whether we can just act. You can interpret it two different ways by reading this because of the minutes.
Right, because my, because we're, we're talking of an ordinance which is different than the plan of conservation development, and so I agree with you. I'm not arguing with you, but I think, I just think we don't have to wait, and it's a separate discussion, and I think we, if we, again, if it jives with the plan of conservation development, fine. I just don't think we have to wait because it's, it's an ordinance that we're trying to pass to protect farmland. And again, I think the stat, again, based on what you've read, and my understanding of it too, because I've read it as well, "may" is not "shall."
So unlike the PA 490 farmland and PA 490 forestland classifications, which are mandatory on all towns, PA 490 open space is a classification that is an option for a municipality to adopt. The terms farmland and forestland are often referred to in general terms as open space, but within the context of PA 490, they are distinct land use value classifications that have specific statutory requirements, and that's the catch right there. We have to now adopt and spell out so that it becomes part of those definitions.
Okay. Thank you. No, great discussion. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Nelson?
There, I want to clarify too. There is a PA 490 open space, and then there's a regular open space. So if people have excess land, you know, 20 acres in their backyard, they can apply for just the regular open space. And the reason I'm really pushing this is because as a real estate broker, you drive through town, and some of the largest pieces of land throughout town that are wooded and have been natural for 100 years and been in people's family for hundreds of years are now up for sale because the taxes went from, you know, 400 or 4,000 to 40,000, and they can't afford them. And it's, it's, as a person who knows what it's like to be taxed out of a home, you know, it's got to change. And again, I appreciate everything you said, but it's not an answer. And are we going to be here again next year having the same appeals? Because these people are stressing out about possibly having to lose their properties that they've been in. So I don't care if leadership has a sit-down with the chairman of the BAA, with the town assessor, with the town attorneys, somebody from 490. We need to get this resolved sooner than later, because if we had done it in September, we could have avoided a lot of the problems these residents are going through now. I appreciate everything you're doing, but I just, I want to fire under this, and I hope you guys will support me with that.
I would have to go back and look at what the timeframe is for applying for that because I think that the, the landowners do have to apply. But there's also a whole section in here that talks to the fact that most people assume they understand what 490 open space is when in fact they don't. And this was eye-opening to me, coming from a community that had very limited 490 acreage. And there's a note in here that I think is really important. We do a lot with open space in Enfield already. We do it in the form of protections with the land use boards when they take conservation easements, deed restrictions, and then we participate in programs funded through the state for land trusts, open space grants, et cetera. We can also, as a community, we have the power granted to us by the state of Connecticut, we can acquire development rights for open space as well from landowners. Another option, so that's that, right? None of that is open space ordinance. This goes on to say, another option to protecting undeveloped land is the PA 490 open space classification. So it's not any of those things I just described. It's now another tool. And in that case, it says specifically, the PA 490 open space classification does not provide permanent protection. However, it is a valuable option to reducing the tax burden on open space parcels that do not meet the criteria for PA 490 farmland or PA 490 forestland classifications. Now, again, I found this illuminating because in my mind, 490 is 490, but it's not. So it's 490 farm, 490 open space. So it's 490 farm, 490 open space, or 490 forest. And I think part of what we need to do as a community is educate the people on how to effectively use this when we implement this, but also all the other things that are available to them now. We found, and I know that several of you were at the annex that night, Joan Nichols was clear. Do not rely on anyone but yourself to keep your records. It is your responsibility to keep your records. It is your responsibility to keep your updates. It is your responsibility that every time you have a change on your 490 forms and you check off that box that says "update," that you retain copies. She was very clear. Because a lot of, unfortunately, what has been the story here is that some of the documents and the filing and the updates and the, this is how it's always been done, or I know so-and-so, and they still live there, that has not served the community well. We have a lot of growing pains, a lot of things happening, a lot of it is related to the files and the conditions of the files. And frankly, people being in these large family farm situations and having that dynamic change over time, children growing up not wanting to go into it, people moving away. We, the assessor and I met with one woman last year who is elderly and is responsible for a significant parcel, and there are relatives, I think the number was 17 or 27, I can't remember specifically, all over the United States of America who send her pieces of money over the course of a year in order to cobble together the taxes owed. These are people, some of them are people she's never met, but they're part of this amalgamation of this family farm unit, and it's, it's, it's not working. So all of these things are really effective tools that we have to position ourselves in order to take advantage of. So we will figure out what that next step is, and it looks to me like it most likely very well could be at an April or May agenda, based on what that timeline is for people to apply.
Okay. So a simple answer would have been, we'll address it in May. You didn't have to take 20 minutes.
There's no simple answer.
They got a basketball game they want to go to.
Hello, hometown, Jonathan Klingon. I want to watch the game too.
I constantly remind Counselor Nelson that, you know, he's off on his questions on certain days, but no. I, I, I think that we can, you know, work together on this. We can discuss this at leadership, and we'll move forward with it. Okay?
No more questions. Moving on.
Counselor Santinella.
I just, I want to go back to what the town manager said at the beginning regarding the ban shell. The Culture and Arts Commission has worked really hard to try to make this something successful. And as the town manager asked for our support, I just would like to ask the council to continue to support that. Because we have been getting a lot of positive feedback, and, you know, on behalf of them, I would like to ask for continued support for those kinds of events. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be real quick, sir. I know. Yeah, I actually did have a real question.
So I'll be quick. So when we, you, ban shell, if, if we were able to have a farmer's market, a suggestion, and I know that'll come before us, but yeah, I hope we don't charge the vendors. I mean, small, small folks who, again, are, you know, hustling their, their, their products. I understand we need two farm, you know, two farmers to be there, but if we're going to have it. It was very successful when we weren't charging, and I think we need to go back to that if possible, when, if, if we're going to have it. And again, I'd just say, your explanation was fantastic. This is a conversation we have to, in my opinion, to Counselor Nelson's opinion. I think this is a workshop. I mean, a saw, get people, sit down, hammer it out, everyone understand, because the 490, in my opinion, is the biggest issue in this town. Because again, as we grow, which we want to, farmland is so important, again, it doesn't matter your political persuasion, if we don't control local food, we don't control anything. So I think it's important, and I appreciate your explanation. I'd love to see some sort of workshop, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation.
I, I think based on tonight's, no, no, based on tonight's comments, based on, with the 490, this is something that we will be discussing, and we will iron it out, and we'll iron it out very soon. Okay? And I'm hoping that we can do it. Well, we're not going to do it tonight, but within the month of May, we'll get this ironed out so that we don't have to have these issues come up on a yearly basis. Okay, thank you for that. Okay. All right. I'm shutting that side of the aisle off, shutting this one off, just moving ahead. Report of special committees. We have three quick little updates. The first one is an update from the Public Works Subcommittee concerning the waiver of fees for the ERFC, and really to take any action possibly based on what I'm going to go through. We did meet with the ERFC Director, Oswe Izuri, requesting a reduction in the fee for the school year lease due to the fact that their grants are being reduced. Their 21st Century Grant, a five-year period that reduces each year after year three. However, the ERFC has to serve the same amount of children despite all of their reduction. So they currently have 272 students, 115 are on this particular grant, and only pay $5 per week. United Way is funding, is also being reduced, and the grants don't allow to pay for the facility. So we know that custodial staff are already present during the programs, and ERFC actually, if the school needs these particular classrooms that they are in, they get bumped out of them. So we did come up with the recommendation from DPW that we want to reduce the annual lease amount to $8,000 for the year, beginning July 1, 2023, which would then end on July 30, 2024. That was a recommendation that, that we came up with, and we think that that's an appropriate recommendation. Now, we can act on this now so that, and I think that this would best suit ERFC, and so I do have a resolution on the table. Would we, I'm going to read it, and let's, let's move forward. Okay? All right. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council approves the recommendation of the Public Works Subcommittee to reduce the annual lease payment of school space from $16,887 to $8,000 for the year commencing July 1, 2023 and ending July 30, 2024, paid equally monthly installments of $666.67. Date prepared March 31, 2023, prepared by Town Manager Ellen Zapu Sasu. Counselor Mangini, and a second by Deputy Mayor Sikala. Okay? All right. I, I think I kind of explained everything that, that went on. I know Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Hopkins, and myself, we're, we're all in agreement with this. So Sheila Rolcall.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Sorry, you said four?
Four, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Nelson has left the room. That's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
All right, thank you. Next, we do have a report from the Leisure Service Committee on the potential of a master plant study of the parks and playgrounds. Counselor Hopkins, do you want to comment on that?
Absolutely. So this is a really productive discussion we had, kind of in light and due to some recent discussion about Brainerd Park. Currently, there, you know, there are some, some failings with how we inspect playground equipment and maintain our parks. I think we should have a plan for our park equipment like we do with other budgetary items. We have a staggered plan. So this is work that this, this committee would like to do with the town manager's office to establish an understanding of where things are at with our parks, and maybe even commission a professional study to give us advice and thoughts on how to move forward with it. I think it's a very good idea. It's very important, and I know that everybody on this council's heard a lot in regard to local parks recently.
Okay. Thank you very much. I know a couple other things that, that we discussed besides the, the, the overall schedule. We also discussed the possibility of moving forward with the disc golf, a nine-hole course, and also playground referrals to, one was the, by the, the library, about that tartan surface, looking for a possible replacement. But those are just a few items that, that we did discuss. And the third thing that, in terms of update from General Government and Finance concerning the revisions to the food truck regulations, I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Sikala a quick update.
Thank you. Just very briefly, one of the many things General Government is working on, it's Counselor Santinella, Counselor Ludwig, and myself, is the food truck regulations and doing some revisions to that. We want to make it, in essence, more user-friendly, more food truck-friendly. Some of the major things that we're looking at is increasing the amount of time during the day that a permit is available for, giving options for day permits, monthly permits, and annual permits, so somebody doesn't have to come in on a weekly basis if they want to be in a certain spot for more than one day or one week, and sort of giving a discount for the longer that they want to have a permit. So that's something that we discussed, and I think with pretty positive reception from us. Increasing the amount of vendors that are going to be allowed at certain places, and actually increasing the amount of places in Enfield that food trucks vendors can come. So in essence, we want to get this pushed through. We do have a meeting later this week. I'm hoping we can sort of button up all of the amendments and get this on the council for a recommendation and moving at the next meeting because we want to get this moving before the really nice weather hits. So that's one of the things that, that we're working on.
All right, great.
More to come.
Thank you very much. Next, Item 11, unfinished business. The report concerning the independent review of assessment taxation, I'm going to ask Counselor Ludwig to give a quick update on that, please.
So, real quick, I mean, so this is just as some of the discussion we've already had tonight, you know, myself, Counselor Hopkins, Counselor Santinella, or all the liaisons to the independent review, and the issues arising, obviously, in the proper reevaluation from 2021. You know, there's been, you know, some delays in scheduling with the final interviews. That's why this is dragged on to this month. Some individuals were not in the area, so, but again, that, most of those interviews, I think all of those interviews have been completed. Some questions and issues did come out of some of the latest or the last interviews, which has caused the delay a little bit. So it's caused for some further investigation by the independent lawyer we hired. We expect this to be wrapped up by the end of this month. And, you know, as speaking for myself and, you know, other, we have not seen the draft of the final report, as Counselor Santinella said earlier, and so, you know, we don't have any comment on that at this point. So that's kind of where we're at, and, you know, that's, I'll put this into the record before we leave, Sheila, so you'll have it. But more to come by the end of the month. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new business under the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda which deals with the resolution to accept the 8-24 from Planning and Zoning, which the disposition of Nathan Hale School instead of public hearing. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Mangini, and a second by Counselor Despard. All in favor? Okay, it looks like, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, abstention, one abstention. So we have 10 in favor, one abstention.
Is there any discussion on this? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just a consent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't see which counselor abstained.
I did. Counselor Nelson. Yep.
That's why. I shouldn't have abstained.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Moving onward with the agenda, Item C. We're getting to the time of the year where we're beginning to see transfers among light items prior to the end of the fiscal year. So these next couple of resolutions, discussion resolution, Item C, request for transfer of funds for custodial machinery, plumbing tool, portable bleachers, fleet shop tools, $69,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from refuse and resource management, health and medical insurance, $69,000, to custodial services, equipment, $30,000, to buildings and grounds, athletic recreation equipment, $8,000, other equipment, $14,000, to fleet services equipment, $17,000. Date prepared March 28, 2023, prepared by Donald Noon's Public Works Director. So moved. Counselor Nelson?
Second.
And a second by Counselor Despard. Any discussion on this? Counselor Finger?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the mayor to the town manager, one of the items listed here is an AC reclamer for the systems. We have one that was only used very shortly at the transfer station when we used to reclaim our own freon up there, air conditioning units and refrigerated units. So maybe you might want to have our Public Works Director just take a look at it, see if that's something that they could use before they purchase a new one. I was told it's in, it's in excellent shape. So just to give you a heads up on that, we do have one. It's in a gray box, that guys will know. Thank you. That was it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Counselor Finger. Sheila Rolcall.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
All right, Item D, request for transfer of funds for custodial supplies of $30,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from buildings and grounds maintenance, health medical insurance, $30,000, to custodial services, custodial supplies and materials, $30,000. Date prepared March 27, 2023, prepared by Donald Noon's Public Works Director. Counselor Mangini, and a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Sheila Rolcall.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
11 in favor and none against.
All right. I believe the next item is a, is going to be a transfer that came out of the pre-budget meetings with the department, so I'm going to ask the town manager very quickly to give an overview of this next resolution, A.
Yes. We would like to go back to using seasonal staff for the public works. These are jobs that are usually given to older high school students and/or college kids who are home for the summer. We were not able to attract a candidate pool last year, which I found very odd, because these are great jobs. It allows kids to get out early in the afternoon, at the end of a shift, continue to play summer sports. You know, it's a great schedule. So I didn't quite understand, other than now being here a year, seeing that it was scheduled for funding strictly within the new fiscal year. But right now is the time you should be hiring and, and prepping and knowing who's coming home and who's interested in the jobs. So by the time July 1 comes around, it's a five-week job, and nobody's interested. Because if you are interested in working, you've already secured something else. So the hiring process has to start earlier. There's drug screenings, there's all kinds of things that we do to ensure we have a healthy workforce to augment our existing crews, and also fill in on some of the vacation times. We have, obviously, very labor-intensive issues with 4th of July. But also, it's, it's the parks, it's mowing, it's those duties that we can delegate to seasonal help in order to free up our skilled workforce to do other things. So if we could have this transfer, what we would be doing is starting the hiring process and the marketing for these probably five to eight positions, we'd be doing it now. As they became available, i.e., somebody comes home from college and is available either right before or right after Memorial Day, they could start in this fiscal year and continue on until the second week of August, instead of just having this abbreviated five-week period, which I think did contribute to nobody being attracted to these jobs. to these jobs. So, litter pickup, mowing, which gets, you know, very difficult in the high grass-growing season, all of those types of things will result, I think, in attracting candidates, but also having a cleaner look at our much-used outdoor spaces during this critical time period. So, I would recommend its approval. We'll see how it goes this year, and maybe it would be something that we can continue for the future.
Thank you very much. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is made from refuse of resource manager, health medical insurance, $14,400, to buildings and grounds temporary seasonal, $14,400. Date prepared, March 30, 2023, prepared by Donald Noon's Public Works Director. So moved. Counselor Nelson and seconded by Counselor Mangini. Any further discussion on this? Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Just really quickly, I'm happy that we're trying this again, because I know we had a long discussion last year about it. One, I think we just need to make sure that we push it out there. If we can't have some sort of in with the career center at the school, which I think we should be able to, but it has to be known that I think these kids either have to be 18 or maybe 17 in some circumstances, but I don't believe you can be 16 because of the machinery that they're operating. And I think that's what Mr. Noon said last year.
That's the age group we're targeting. We can hire younger, but they wouldn't be able to use the equipment, so that really kind of defeats the purpose.
Right, right, and I think that's the conversation.
They could do litter, they could do that type of thing.
They could do a little. I would suggest also looking into, if full-time doesn't work, offering part-time to some of these kids, because I have teenagers, they don't necessarily want to work 40 hours a week during their summertime. If we can find somebody to fill them for 40 hours, that's great. Maybe something that is 30 hours or so might be more attractive to some of these teenage kids, just a suggestion.
Time's up. Okay, thank you. Counselor Finger.
Thirty seconds.
One of the problems we had in the past, and I think this is what town manager would agree, is the wage. You know, are we, are we increasing the wage from, you know, what we were paying before and try to get, because Duncan Donson's paying more, and that's where they're going.
The wage is going up by statute, June, June, at $15 an hour, but I don't think there's been any proposal to increase the wage, other than what the statute's requiring right now.
I know, but you might want to consider that. These kids will come if you get, if they can get more money. That's just that, more money.
Counselor Ludwig.
I'll just say, I endorse these positions, because I did it when I was in college, and I drove a Jeep over a stump and got it stuck, and I survived. So, a great job. You learn a lot. You're right, there's a, you do a variety of different things, and it's a perfect summer job for a young person. Yep.
Yep. I'm in, I'm in total favor of this. I think is, this is something that really should be done yearly.
Yes.
You know, if you, if you do it yearly, and we don't, you know, sway away from this, you could technically have somebody who's in college that they want to come back every single summer, so you don't even have to train them after one year. So, that would be the ideal. And I think hopefully this is the ultimate goal that we're looking for in hiring for summer help. So.
Mayor, just.
And also, out there, if there's any lifeguards that are out there, we're, we're looking for lifeguards also, big time.
And Parks and, Parks and Rec staff for summer camp as well.
Let's just throw in crossing guards, too.
Yep. Sheila, roll call.
Put it on Facebook. Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Antonella?
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Item F, discussion resolution, the resolution that we've been waiting all night for, is the repealing of the massage therapy establishments ordinance, Enfield Town Code, Sections 18-31 through 18-37, inclusive 18-61 through 18-68 inclusive, and 18-91 through 18-94 inclusive. Whereas on January 13, 1975, the Enfield Town Council enacted the above referenced ordinance, and whereas the council wishes to consider repealing the ordinance, and whereas the council held a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers on April 3, 2023, to allow public input on the proposed repeal of the massage therapy establishments ordinance, now therefore be a resolve that the council hereby adopts the attached ordinance repealing the massage therapy establishments ordinance, Enfield Town Code Sections 18-31 through 18-37 inclusive, 18-61 through 18-68 inclusive, and 18-91 through 18-94 inclusive. Date prepared, March 27, 2023, prepared by the town manager's office. Counselor Despard?
Second.
And a second by Counselor Ungary. Any discussion? I think we're ready to move forward with this. And I have to thank Mr. Nate, Nate Fay and Hazard Wellness to be bringing this to our attention. Roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Oh, questions, I'm sorry.
I don't know, through, through the mayor, through the gentleman, just curious, do most people know that they can qualify for your service through their HSA?
I'm, I'm seeing more of that over the years now, yeah.
Because I know most healthcare coverage doesn't cover it, but it's qualified under the tax code.
I see an FSA and more, bigger companies, I know, like Mass Mutual are actually reimbursing my patients now as well.
Great.
Simply with a receipt.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
And Counselor Antonella?
Four.
Eleven in favor and none against.
Welcome to town. Item G, discussion resolution, a resolution to amend the Enfield Town Code Section 82-41 parking violation fines, whereas the Town Code Section 82-41 establishes the fines for various parking violations, and whereas the Town Council wishes to amend the Town Code Section 82-41 to revise the amounts of the fines, and whereas the council held a public hearing at the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers on April 3, 2023, to allow public input on the proposed amendment to parking violation fines ordinance. Now therefore be a resolve that the council hereby adopts the attached amendment to the Enfield Town Code Section 82-41 parking violation fines, date prepared, March 28, 2023. So moved. Counselor Nelson and seconded by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this? Counselor Nelson. I'm just gonna, I'm, I am going to support this tonight, but I still have some serious concerns about the minimal amount these fines are, because I don't think they're enough for somebody to get up at 2:00 in the morning and move their car in a snowstorm. But, it is a step in the right direction, but I think we need to keep going with it. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Just very briefly, and this is another discussion that we had in general government and with the, in conjunction with the Police Department, kind of made these recommendations, and we are more on par with the surrounding communities. So, I think this is sort of blessed by our subcommittee.
Thank you very much. Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Antonella?
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Item H, discussion resolution, resolution to settle the property tax assessment appeal for 20 Phoenix Ave. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the town attorney, James N. Talberg, where he is designated to settle the outstanding tax assessment appeal in the following action, Enfield Lodging LLC versus Town of Enfield, docket number HHB CV 226073512S. The fair market value of the property known as 20 Phoenix Avenue to be $6 million. Date prepared, March 27, 2023, prepared by the Office of the Town Attorney.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini and a second by Counselor Ungary. Any discussion on this? Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Des, Despard has left the room. Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
I'm going to abstain, because I have an issue with the numbers on there. I support the agreement, but I think those numbers are wrong on that page.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Antonella?
Four.
That's nine in favor, none against, and one abstention.
Item I, discussion resolution, the resolution to authorize a reduction of property maintenance fines for 34 John Drive with conditions. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the reduction of the property maintenance fines on 34 John Drive to $10,000, subject to the condition that the house be rehabilitated by December 31, 2023, and be it further resolved that if this condition is not adhered to, the fine associated with the property maintenance lien recorded in volume 2789, page 34, of the Enfield Land Records will be $94,074. Date prepared, March 27, 2023, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development. Counselor Nelson and seconded by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this?
No.
Nick, Commissioner Hopkins?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, the, I just want to briefly say, the goal of our blight ordinance is to fairly and promptly resolve blight issues when they're reported by, by local residents. You know, this, the Blight Review Committee, which this recommendation has come out of, has been working really hard to review applications like the two in front of you tonight, but also change the process to get out of, to get out of compliance properties back in compliance for the benefit of the owner, neighbors and the community as a whole. So, the proposal tonight is for the, from the committee, is to reduce fines to $10,000. This was a property in serious disrepair. The mortgage company has acquired the home, has stabilized it, and has paid outstanding town and late taxes. I believe that keeping the $10,000 signals that regardless of the history of a property, that blight rules and process have to be respected, but it also doesn't create unnecessary hurdles for getting this property back on the market, which is the goal of our blight review committee process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, just want to make sure.
Counselor Ludwig.
I just want to make sure I completely understand. So, we're not, so basically, right now, it stays at $94,000 until we, if by December, at some point before now in December, we need some sort of, I assume, I don't, I don't know the real estate term, where, is it, is it just the property needs to be redone, or is it actually need to be for sale?
This particular, this particular property is just to be done.
Just to be, okay.
Because it's CHFA or one of them, Fannie Mae owns it, and their goal is first-time home buyers. So, we know they're going to sell it because they're not in the business of owning a home.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
And Counselor Antonella?
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Item J, discussion resolution, the resolution to authorize a reduction of property maintenance fines for 25 Lincoln Street. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the reduction of the property maintenance fines and lien fee on 25 Lincoln Street to $5,499. Date prepared, March 27, 2023, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development. So moved. Counselor Nelson and seconded by Counselor Mangini. Any discussion on this one? Counselor Hopkins?
Just, just very briefly, similar situation here. This is a very thoughtful request coming from the Blight Review Committee. This, this particular amount of money that we will be looking to have the mortgage company on the line for is the period of time that they had possession of it. But I think this is a pretty fair request. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mang-
Four.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
And Counselor Antonella?
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Okay, thank you. Are there any business to come before the said meeting? All right, item 14, any public communications? Any final public communications? There are no public communications. Counselor Communications?
I just have.
Okay, Counselor Pisner.
Okay, so, to the mayor, to the town manager, and my fault, I should have brought this up for discussion on the Nathan Hale. I know we're going to have a public hearing, but I guess I'm a little confused as to what the public hearing is going to be for, because we don't know what the long-term goal is. We don't know if the $200,000 has been waived. We don't know what the selling price is. So, could you clarify any of that? Yep. We actually had some conversation about that today, about whether we had to actually schedule a public hearing, or whether we could wait until we got those answers. But specifically, if you look on the end of the resolution, that specific Connecticut General Statute 7-163E is triggered when the Planning and Zoning Commission gives a positive affirmation that you may dispose, lease, whatever, acquire. But, because the Nathan Hale School is valued at more than $10,000, it has triggered a second public hearing, which is this one. So, we have to, because we now have to inform the public that we are probably, at some point, going to dispose of the school out of its current use. But yes, there are two unanswered questions right now. One is, what is the end use, if in fact, we are going to sell it, which I think the neighbors deserve to know. And the second one is, what is the financial responsibility of the town as it relates to the outstanding school construction lien? I talked with Superintendent Dreszek earlier today. He has not heard back. He calls them on regular business a couple of times a week and always asks if there is a status. They have not yet responded to our request.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Antonella.
So, one quick thing. You might recall back in February, I had mentioned the Hometown Heroes Grant Program for Arcane officers, and Officer Colton Toono and his officer Duncan were in the running, and I'm happy to announce, I found out today, they won third place. And, so Duncan has got a $5,000 grant. So, that's a lot of great milk bones for, for him. Thank you.
That's great. We should all give a bark out to him. Thank you.
Oh, that'd be fun.
Counselor Hopkins, that is a good idea. Counselor Hopkins.
I second that. So, I just wanted to briefly just say, I don't really like tit-for-tat, but I don't want incorrect information to stand here. None of what I shared in my text with the affected homeowner, that apparently at least one counselor put an effort to obtain and decided to read here tonight, was not already in the public light, other than perhaps the extent to which I'm concerned with this issue. These things have all been discussed in open town council meetings. I'll kind of go through them. The fact that the plan in March was to get the report out in a month was public. It was read in a town council liaison update. The issues that led to the town to make, making the smart decision to have an investigation into these issues was also clearly public. And the town assessor overturning BAA appeals while the investigation was still ongoing was also public. And I know it's been discussed at a town council meeting previously, and what I spoke to my constituent about. So, again, ask, please, 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 stop playing politics so that we can wait for the report to be done, so all of us can review it and hopefully address any areas of concern in a bipartisan way. Thank you.
So, so, I'm going to give you, as the mayor who read the text, the opportunity to respond to him, that in no way am I playing politics with this. He didn't trash me in those texts, Bob. So, feel free to address him that this is not a political stunt, that what he did is 100% unethical and wrong. And he's the one trying to make politics out of it right now. Because I will read the text word for word, which takes three of you, plus some staff down with it. So, I don't think we want to do that, and he should learn when to shut his mouth before it gets him in deeper. All right.
John.
No, John has his hand up. We're gonna, John, do you have?
I just, respectfully, we need, it's been said, we need to stop. We, we have serious work to do here, and we, we need to deliver this report in a way that's going to be credible with the public, and this needs to stop. Okay? It's been said, and we need to just wait 30 days, and we will have the answers that we have. Please. There's been too much that's gone into this. Please.
At this point in time, we, excuse me, we're going to be wrapping up. I'm, I'm going to say the final comments, then we're going to have a motion to adjourn. We, we We are going to move forward with this. Everybody spoke their piece regarding everything. I've had my discussions with Counselor Hopkins, and we will move forward. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Counselor Mangini and a second by Counselor Santinella. All in favor? Unanimous? Good night, everyone.